If you could take your seats, the meeting will begin. I now declare the 2012 Brattleboro Union High School District Annual Meeting is in order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. This has been a difficult year for the school community. This district and others nearby have been touched by tragedy, not once, but repeatedly. Please join me in a moment of silence and solidarity for those who've lost loved ones and for those who are trying to find answers in this difficult time. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I'd like to introduce Chairman Bob Woodward of the Brattleboro Union High School Board, who will introduce members of the board. Bob?
Thank you, Tim. As I look down the line here, on the end, we have Lori Cartwright from Brattleboro, Russ Janis from Brattleboro, Scott Henry from Putney, Sean Murphy from Guilford, Ruth Barton from Dummerston, Ian Torrey from Brattleboro, Mary Ann Gardner from Vernon, and Vice Chair Ricky Davidson from Brattleboro.
Thank you, Bob. And now, I'd like to also introduce Windham Southeast Supervisory Union Superintendent Ron Staley to introduce members of his administration that are here and members of the high school administrative team.
Thank you, Tim. We have a number of new administrators as part of the administrative team with the retirement of Jim Day after eight years of dedicated service to the BUHS high school principal. We have a new high school principal, Steve Perrin. Steve's doing a great job. And we have the assistant principals, Chris Day, Andy Haas, and our Dean of Students, Kate Margadis. And for the Brattleboro area middle school, we have Principal Ingrid Crisco. And we have a new assistant principal, Jerry Curry. And for the Windham Regional Career Center, our Director Dave Coughlin, and Assistant Director Michael Burnett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Just some opening announcements. You can see around you where the exits are in case of a fire. Fire codes and state fire marshals say that we need to do that. As well, if you are looking to use the restroom facilities, the exit in the far southeast corner will lead you around the corner to a pair of toilets there. The Costa Rica program is offering refreshments on a buy-donation basis. In fact, they're going to Costa Rica during April school vacation, so please be generous and help them out if you possibly can. I know that I will several times tonight. At this time, we'd like to just briefly go over the rules of the meeting to highlight several of them. Remember, if you are looking to be part of the meeting, enter and check in with your respective town clerk. They will give you a voter card, which you should use to gain the moderator's attention. If there is a ballot vote or division of the House, members of the town clerks of their respective towns and any BCA members who happen to be present will be tapped as tellers in vote counters. Now, there may be a division of the House if someone calls for it. We'll announce all vote results. If there is a demand of a paper ballot, if seven or more voters stand, we will do that. In addition, we'll select several sergeants-at-arms. In fact, I think just by his position and stature in life, Mr. Bill Holliday, a member of the Dummerston Select Board, will be the honorary sergeant-at-arms this evening. Don't worry, he's wiry. Debate is limited to five minutes per person speaking for the first time. And again, if there is any doubt in the rules, Robert's Rules of Order will be the guiding principle. First Choice Communications is running audio this evening, and two lovely young ladies, Jalisa and Symphony, stand up, wave your hands, are going to be running the microphones. And BCTV is filming this for later broadcast, so please wait until the microphone runner gets to you before you begin speaking. With that, I'd like to move on to Article Number One, to Act on the Reports of Officers. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Oops, is this on? Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the reports of the district officers be accepted as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that reports of district officers be accepted as printed. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Number One. Article Two, to elect by ballot, a moderator. Superintendent Ron Staley will be handling the article.
I would like to call for a nomination for the position of moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I mean, Ron Staley, excuse me. I nominate Tim Arsenal as moderator for the ensuing year.
Second.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd ask to cast one ballot in support of Tim Arsenal as our moderator. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Done.
Well, a couple of things. A, thank you for your support. And I know at least one member of this room I served in the Brattleboro FFA chapter with as I was formerly a student here. Mr. Denon's teaching apparently worked. Maybe. We move on to Article Number Three. Article Number Three is to elect by ballot a clerk. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I nominate Barbara Noakowski as clerk to serve for the ensuing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Barbara Noakowski be elected to serve as clerk for the ensuing year. Any further nominations? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion that one ballot be placed for Barb Noakowski. And I see, Mr. Davidson, you were smiling and making that motion.
Yes.
Thank you. And there was a second as well. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've elected Barbara Noakowski as clerk. Article Number Four, to elect by ballot, a treasurer. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I nominate James E. Kane as treasurer to serve for the ensuing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gardner has nominated James Kane to serve as treasurer for the ensuing year. Any further nominations? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've elected James Kane as your treasurer. Article Number Five is to elect by ballot, one auditor, to serve for three years. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is, Mr. Moderator.
I'd like to nominate Richard DeGray as auditor to serve for a period of three years.
Any second on the nomination?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Richard DeGray be elected as auditor to serve for a period of three years. Any further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. You've elected Richard DeGray as auditor for a period of three years. Article Number Six, to see if Brattleboro Union High School District Six will authorize its vote of directors to retain the services of a certified public accountant or public accountant to aid in the work of the auditors. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Board of School Directors be authorized to employ a certified public accountant or public accountant to aid in the work of the auditors for the ensuing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six be authorized to employ a certified public accountant or public accountant to aid in the work of the auditors for the ensuing year. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Number Six. Article Seven, to see what salaries Brattleboro Union High School District Six will vote to pay its officers and its directors. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six be authorized to issue vouchers for the payment of its officers and directors for the ensuing fiscal year in the following amounts. To its clerk, the sum of $200. To its directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairman shall be paid an additional $1,000, excuse me, for a total of $19,200.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the Brattleboro Union High School District Six be authorized to issue vouchers for the payment of its officers and directors for the ensuing fiscal year in the following amounts. To the clerk, the sum of $200. To its directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairman shall be paid an additional $1,000 for a total of $19,200. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll move for a vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And you have passed Article Number Seven. Article Number Eight, to see if the voters will authorize the expenditure of a sum not to exceed $418,000 for one-time capital expenses as detailed below. Floor replacement, $25,000. BAM's roof total recoat, $60,000. OG Kubota tractor, $48,000. Trade and industrial center field improvement, $35,000. Football grandstands, $250,000, for a total of $418,000. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six authorize the expenditure of a sum not to exceed $418,000 for one-time capital expenses as detailed. Floor replacement, $25,000. BAM's total recoat, $60,000. Kubota tractor, $48,000. Tick field improvement, $35,000. Football grandstands, $250,000, for a total of $418,000. And if seconded, I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Mr. Woodward, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A few years ago, the Board requested of administration that we start to develop a longer-range capital plan. Our major project has now been complete for about five years or so, and we have to look ahead, and we have a huge facility that needs to be maintained. So we challenged the administrators to put together a view about eight years out for capital expenditures. This will be a living and working document that will change over time, but we've started to identify things that will need to be dealt with over the next few years. For this year, we have prioritized five items, and I'd like to just go through them quickly and explain a little bit about what we, the reasoning and what we plan to do. Robert Clark, who is the director of the facilities here, is here to answer any questions, get me out of trouble if I get off in the wrong direction. But I'd just like to talk briefly about the five items. First is floor replacement. This is primarily in the food service areas and in a few hallways where we have issues with floor tiles and floor surface. When the project was done, there were a million things that had to be tended to, and perhaps in retrospect, not everything was 100% perfect. Specifically, with regards to the cafeteria floors, where the material that was used was specked out, but has, over the years it's been in use, shown that it doesn't react that well to food and grease and so forth. So we have some floor surface there that's been coming up and has been repaired off and on. There are also a few places in the hallways that the subfloor may not have been perfectly prepared underneath, or just from the incredible amount of traffic, some 1,800 people a day in and out of there. And some of that floor has now been down for close to eight or nine years. We need to replace some tiles. It's a huge amount of floor in this facility. We'd like to be able to take care of this that needs to be done, and I'm sure there probably will be, down the line, timely replacement of other sections, but we would like to keep ahead of it and spread it out. The BAM's roof. BAM's roof itself is actually quite old. It was redone, I believe, in 2001 with the project looming on the horizon. It was done with a 10-year warranty. And in the course of the project, we had installed some HVAC units on the roof and some other things on the roof. There's a lot of traffic up there in the course of the project, and there have been some issues with some leaks and some ponding. We did some repairs. The 10-year warranty on the roof is just about up, and we feel that we need to do some work up there to make it appropriate for the next 10 years and so that we can get a 10-year warranty roof and be in pretty good shape for the BAM's roof. The tractor is 11 years old. It has used a huge amount, summer, winter, for field maintenance, and the winter, plowing, snow removal, and salting. And it has become an issue where maintenance, about $11,000 in the last couple of years. And it is, there's some rusting, obviously. If you carry salt around, you're going to get some rusting. And we feel that it's prudent to replace that tractor at this time as opposed to spending a lot of money on maintenance, which we will down the road. The tick field, the trade and industrial center field, was a new field. When the project was done, it, it's a great field. It's being heavily utilized, and the issue is that it is not totally fenced in, nor does it have any facilities for electric or changing or storage facilities. And we are seeing a good use of the field, but also some abuse of the field. And we feel that it's time to secure it a little better, and also, part of this project would provide some storage area and changing areas for the teams that utilize it. The football grandstands. Grandstands have been in place since before the school. They were here when I was here in middle school, junior high that we called it, and they're still here, and they have outlived their safe life as well as their practical life. The proposal for this would be to eliminate the grandstand on the south side of the field, which are actually on the football field, and redo the grandstands on the north side and have everything there together. It'll be safer. It'll comply with regulations. It'll be approved for handicap use. It will also eliminate a lot of traffic across the track, and it will allow the field to be used for sports that it's not adequately sized for now by getting rid of the grandstands on the south side. So that's the basics of it. If there's any questions, Robert is here and can give you details.
Further discussion on Article Number Eight. In the back of the room, Mr. DeGray, make sure he gets a microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital in another venue. I understand capital quite well. And when you look at needs, wants, must-haves, and as you were talking about this capital plan, I had talked to Mr. Perrin a little bit earlier this evening. The reality of the situation when you were talking about the floor replacement in the cafeteria, I was disappointed to hear you talking about that because we had a clerk of works, the architects, and if substandard materials were used, my first question to you is, why aren't we going after the people who are responsible for the substandard materials used in our cafeteria on the flooring? When you're building facilities like this, we shouldn't be replacing floors six or seven years out. That just doesn't happen. And I would, I would go around to other facilities within the region and say, have you had to replace your kitchen areas? Have you had to replace hallways within five or six years of installation? And so I was disappointed in not hearing you talking about possible legal action against the people who are responsible for putting in a substandard flooring in a high-traffic I get the roof. That happens. The warranty's up. The tractor. But the field improvements? The $35,000 for a field to have a change area? Come on. This is taking our hard-earned money here and going, boy, it'd be nice to have a building up there where people can change. The referees come and can change. We don't even have a rust area on 91. And we're going to spend $35,000 to build an area over there. There is a building over there, a storage building, small one. This is not being responsible with our money. And at some point, and I respect the work that you all do, because I know how difficult it is, but at some point, you have to go, wait a minute. This isn't the best expenditure of this money. I look at what's coming down the road, the uncertainty. People are talking about $5, $6 a gallon for gas, and we're going to spend $35,000 so someone can change in a shed up by the softball field. Having said that, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Moderator, to reduce the capital plan by $60,000, and that would be a total of $358,000.
Is there a second to Mr. DeGray's motion? Moved and seconded that the bottom line on Article Eight be reduced by $60,000, making the new total $358,000. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Barton?
Do we not already have a motion on the floor?
This is an amendment, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't say that.
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you. This is an amendment to the main motion. Thank you. Discussion on the DeGray amendment. The chair would recognize Mr. Clark. Are you a voting member of the district, sir?
Aye.
Okay, just double-checking. All right. Please proceed.
Yeah, right there. The mic's not on.
Mic's not on.
Okay, here, they'll take care of that. You have a lovely voice. We'd like to hear you. Here we go. That's what you get when you use the low bidder. Maybe if we could bring, if we could bring the other microphone over? Apologize for the delay. Mr. Clark, please continue.
Okay, I am a voting member, and I live in Putney, and I would like to address some concerns with the TIC. The $35,000 is not just for changing rooms. The $35,000, almost $16,000 is to secure the field. Right now, the field is completely wide open. If somebody wants to drive their car out in the field, they're welcome to drive on the field and do a lot of damage anytime they want. The field is heavily used, and there are young girls out there on the weekends that are changing in the parking lot, and they change in vehicles. Now, I have young girls, and I don't think it's appropriate for young girls to be changing in a parking lot. So it's not just about spending money. That's what I seem to hear. We're just spending money for the sake of spending money. That is, that is not the idea. I pay taxes too. I'm affected just like everybody else. But we're not spending money to spend money. We built this really nice building, and it's got some flaws. The floors, yes, they need some work. Springfield built their high school, and within three years, they were replacing their floors. It was a $55 million project. There's bound to be some problems with a building of this scope, this size, and that amount of money. It's going to happen on any project. No project is perfect. Can you get a lawyer and sue them? Yeah. Litigation's really expensive. Where will it go? In the meantime, we've had three health violations, three years in a row. They've cited us for the flaws. This is the health department. This is where the food is served to feed our kids. I need to do something about it. I can't just keep ignoring the fact that it's not meeting code. The bleachers do not meet code. Young children can fall through and get hurt, or even worse. So we need to do something about the bleachers. But the TIC field, $16,000, just about, and I bid it out, three bidders, was just to secure the field. Then there were some changing rooms, and then to bring power to the field. And to get the young girls that are changing in the parking lot, changing in their cars, and give them a secure place to change in private. That's what it's really about.
Thank you. Further discussion on the DeGray amendment. In the middle of the room, I believe that's Mr. Savory.
I guess I'm just concerned in general about the amount of money that we spend on sports. It wasn't that long ago that we spent a fortune on a new track. Now we got another $200,000 on bleachers, another $35,000 for another field. I think in this time and age, and the difficulties that we're all having, that this is a time to tighten our belt buckle in regard to athletics. I don't really, in general, I think you've got a really good budget this year, but to pump more money into athletics at this extent, I'm just not in favor of it this time. Thank you.
Further discussion on the DeGray amendment. Up in the grandstands? And please use your voter card to be recognized. Thank you.
Peter Cannizaro, Brattleboro. If this budget amendment passes, does that mean the floors won't get fixed and the field won't get fixed either? Just wondering if somebody on the board could say, will that $60,000 mean these things don't happen?
The administration is interrogated if it chooses Mr. Woodward or Mr. Staley.
Well, I don't think that necessarily means that they will fall into continued decay. We'll have to come up with another plan. Simple as that.
Further discussion on the DeGray amendment. In the back of the room, in the stands.
Thanks. Tim Kip, Brattleboro. I call a question.
Question has been moved. Is there a second? That was a second or a cough. I'll take either one. All those, actually, I'm going to call it moot, quite frankly, Mr. Kip, because no one else was going to rise at this point. I think we can dispense with a motion to cease debate. So again, we'll move for a vote on the DeGray amendment to decrease the bottom line on Article Number Eight by $60,000, making it a total of $300,000. Number 8 by $60,000, making it a total of $358,000. All those in favor of the DeGray amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. The amendment has been defeated. We now go back to Article 8 as it was originally read. Further discussion. And if there is none, we will move for a vote on Article 8. Again, the article would be for the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 to authorize the expenditure of a sum not to exceed $418,000 for one-time capital expenses as detailed. Floor replacement, $25,000. BAM's roof recoat, $60,000. OG Kubota tractor, $48,000. Trade and industrial center field improvement, $35,000. Football grandstands, $250,000, for a total of $418,000. All those in favor of Article 8 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Number 8. Article 9. Turning the page. Article 9, to see if the voters shall authorize the use of a portion of the unreserved and unrestricted fund balance in the amount of $766,895 to defray expenses for FY 2013 as noted in the proposed revenue budget for the 2012-2013 FY 2013 year. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize the use of a portion of the unreserved and unrestricted fund balance in the amount of $766,895 to defray expenses for fiscal year 2013 as noted in the proposed revenue budget for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize the use of a portion of the unreserved and unrestricted fund balance in the amount of $766,895 to defray expenses for FY 2013 as noted in the proposed revenue budget for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Is there discussion on the motion? And seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 9. Article 10, to see if the voters shall authorize the transfer of $33,105 from the district's educational reserve for the purpose of funding and defraying expenses for 2012-2013, the FY 2013 year. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize the transfer of $33,105 from the district's educational reserve for the purpose of funding and defraying expenses for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize the transfer of $33,105 from the district's educational reserve for the purpose of funding and defraying expenses for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Discussion on Article 10. In the middle of the room, the gentleman with his hand raised, and please wait for the microphone.
Michael Bosworth. I'd just like a little bit more of an explanation. What's the district educational reserve normally used for, and what does this do to it? I mean, is there then plenty left there, or, so, just a point of information?
The school board and/or administrators are interrogated if they so choose. And Mr. Kane, who is not a resident of the district, shall be allowed, if there is no objection, to him speaking. Mr. Kane, please go ahead.
Okay. The district established the educational reserve fund two years ago at the 2010 annual meeting and deposited a sum of money. Again, last year at the annual meeting, they deposited $800,000. And at this point, there's a total of $1,725,024 in the educational reserve fund. That was set up to set aside funds for educational purposes, to assist in balancing tax impacts year to year. We've been fortunate. For the past three-plus years, we've had large surpluses. As compared to a period of time in the past, not too distant past, we had an accumulated deficit over $700,000 in about 2004. So we've been fortunate. In addition to that, there was a handout this evening highlighting savings on refinancing the bond, the balance of the bond for the project for the high school, and the savings coming back to the BUHS district over the next 15 years, if you read the schedule, will be in excess of $1 million. $800,000 of that is going to be coming in FY 15. But that money is set aside for educational purposes, and the board cannot utilize that money unless it's approved by this body.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Further discussion on Article 10. And seeing none, we'll move for a vote on the article. Again, the motion that Brattleboro Union High School District 6 authorize the transfer of $33,105 from the district's educational reserve for the purpose of funding and defraying expenses for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And you have passed Article 10. We move to Article 11, to see if Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 will vote to appropriate a sum of money to defray its expenses and liabilities for the ensuing year, and if so, how much? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 appropriate the sum of $27,019,019 in order to defray its expenses and liabilities for the fiscal year 2012-2013. If adopted, the portion of this total sum to be raised by taxes, to be only that portion not received from revenues from other sources. And if there's a second, I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 appropriate the sum of $27,019,019 and no sense in order to defray its expenses and liabilities for the fiscal year 2012-2013. If adopted, the portion of the total sum to be raised by taxes, to be only that portion not received from revenues from other sources. Mr. Woodworth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Tim. I hope I'm not the no sense part of this. Thank you, and thank you all to the voters who came out tonight to work with us on this process. The budget we present for your approval tonight is, for the third year in a row, a level-funded budget. In October, we challenged the administration and staff with developing an operating budget with expenses at or below this year while providing the same level of service to our students. Thanks to a great effort by administrators, the teachers, and my fellow board members, we're able to put forth an extremely responsible operating budget, one that reflects the reality of a slightly smaller enrollment and is sensitive to the continued pressure on you, the taxpayers who support our education system. This plan for 2012-2013 contains no new programs, and we have not eliminated any programs. We've been able to achieve savings through better utilization of our resources, both at the district level and in each of the three schools. In particular, we continue to benefit from reduced special education tuition costs for out-of-district placements. We have reduced staff positions by two and a half full-time equivalents, and this budget incorporates significant savings from our early retirement incentive program. Allowances for all negotiated salary and benefit increases are included in the proposal. The health insurance premiums were budgeted with projected increases of 5%. So the net result is an operating budget that is down 1.26% from last year. So I'd like to provide some specifics using the annual report summary, which is the small book many of you have in front of you. And if you turn to page 7, that's the page that I like to use, because it's got a pretty nice summary of how it's broken down by school. First, district-wide, we're budgeting a 1.76% decrease for fiscal year 2013. And this is largely due to a $230,000 tuition reduction for out-of-district student placements. We've made small increases in the budget for plan building maintenance, energy cost, technology, and our extremely successful collegiate high school program. The senior high budget is down 2.28%. We realize savings here from reorganization of our administrative staff, early retirement incentive, and a reduction of one full-time position in both the science and math departments. We've added one much-needed position in the senior high in technology integration. The next line is career center tuition. This is up a little bit. An increased percentage of our career center enrollment is BUHS students this year, or this coming year, projected to be, versus the other sending schools. So that's up a little. Middle school budget is down 3%. Here again, the early retirement incentive has generated savings. We've reallocated staff resources to increase emphasis in mathematics. Discretionary spending in all departments is level-funded. The Wyndham Regional Career Center budget is up less than 1%. We are basically continuing the same academic programs for the coming year, and we've reallocated expenses slightly to areas that are important and growth areas. We've added resources to program that are growing in student interest, including performing in technical arts, and our adult tech ed program, which now serves over 600 adults. Putting it all together, we have an operating budget that's down $312,731 from last year. If you turn to page 25, which I believe is the last page of the book, you'll see that we've kept operating expense budget levels, overall level, for the past five years, and I think that's a real credit to the administration and the staff. We add in capital improvements you've just approved, and debt service on the building project and the track bond, we end up at $27,437,119,000. It's a 0.17% increase from last year. You've just heard the good news on the debt service. That's going to help us in coming years. Now I'm going to ask Jim Kane to review the revenue side of the budget and the tax implications for the five towns.
Mr. Kane is recognized.
Okay, if you go to...
Use the mic, please.
If you go to page... Page 36, 37, and 38 in the annual report, there's a detailed revenue summary. The critical number there is really the general state support number, and that number dictates the tax rate for the five communities that make up the high school. The overall tax impact projected for FY 13 based on the proposed budget shows decreases in Brattleboro, Dumerson, Guilford, and Putney. There's a small increase on the high school side for Vernon. And at the front of the room this evening, there were colored sheets, different color for each town with projected tax impacts, and it had different values, and it had the income sensitivity piece built in. And you could see Brattleboro, the increase from one year to the next was zero. I can give you some examples on a few of the others. Dumerson, on a $300,000 home for a family income of $70,000, would have a $63 decrease in taxes. A $200,000 home on $50,000 income would have a $45 decrease. Guilford even had a larger decrease overall. In the total tax impact, this has the proposed K6, pre-K6, pre-K8, and BUHS tax impact included, because you really can't separate it out. It's one educational, overall, one educational tax rate for each town. Guilford, a $200,000 home, $50,000 income, a reduction of $145 in taxes. $300,000 home, $70,000 income, a $203 decrease. $150,000 home, $40,000 income, 116 decrease. Putney had some small increases. On a $200,000 home with a $40,000 income, it would be $44 increase per year. And Vernon, overall tax impact on a $200,000 home with a $50,000 income, had a $20 tax increase. So I think overall, the tax impact from this budget and the proposed town budgets as proposed is pretty minimal, and these rates are based on the projected base rate of 89 cents. Right now, the most recent information that we have is that they're going to be approved at 88. So these projections will be further reduced.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Number 11. And going once, going twice. Seeing no one looking to debate the question, we go for a vote. Again, the motion is that Brattleboro Union High School District 6 appropriate a sum of $27,019,019 in order to defray its expenses and liabilities for the fiscal year 2012-2013. If adopted, the portion of the total sum to be raised by taxes, to be not only that portion, to be only that portion, not received from revenues from other sources. All those in favor of Article 11 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Number 11. We move to Article 12 to see if Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 will authorize the district to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the state of Vermont and the United States government. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Barton?
I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize its Board of School Directors to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the state of Vermont and the United States government.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Brattleboro Union High School District 6 authorize its Board of School Directors to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the state of Vermont and the United States government. Discussion on Article 12. And seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 12. Article 13, to see if Brattleboro Union High School District 6 will vote to authorize its Board of Directors to borrow money pending the receipt of payments from the member districts by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from the date thereof. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Barton?
I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District Number 6 authorize its Board of School Directors to borrow money pending the receipt of payments from the member districts and not in excess of anticipated revenue for the school year by the issuance... by the issuance of its notes or orders payable no later than one year from the date thereof.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Brattleboro Union High School District Six authorize its Board of School Directors to borrow money pending the receipt of payments from the member districts and not in excess of anticipated revenue for the school year by the issuance of its notes or orders payable no later than one year from the date thereof. Discussion on Article 13. In the middle of the room, I believe that's Mr. Agave from Brattleboro. You've got your voter card, right, Spoon? Your voter card, just want to... Okay, just wanted to double-check. Great, thank you. Please continue.
Spoon Agave, District Three. Does the school board actually borrow money? Or is this what they feel, what they have to have if the cash flow is insufficient?
The school board or administration is interrogated?
We have in the past utilized this. Depending on when revenues come in, we did... I don't believe we did last year. But we need to have it there, that option.
I might add, just as kind of an FYI, it just seems to me, reading not long ago an article in the newsletter of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns on a discussion of this particular article that seems to appear in almost every town meeting in the state is probably unnecessary. They were saying it is, in fact, the board's fiduciary responsibility to pay the bills. And they don't really need to ask permission to borrow money in order to do it. You might check that out on the state level.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Number 13. And seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 13. Article Number 14, any other business that may lawfully come before this meeting, any actions taken shall be non-binding by note of the warning. Mr. Staley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a few acknowledgements to school board members that I'd like to read. This is a nine-year service award from the Vermont School Board Association and it's to members that have served on the BUHS board for nine years in recognition of dedication and exemplary service to the Vermont children as board members for the Brattleboro Union High School Board. Ruth Barton. We also have Sean Murphy, a nine-year service award for his dedicated service to the students of Brattleboro Union High School. And this next individual also has a nine-year service award and he's actually retiring from the board this year. And this is Scott Henry from Putney. And the last person I'd like to acknowledge is our district business administrator. Jim Kane has served not only the BUHS Six District, but all of WSESU District for over 30 years. And it's his work that really kind of sets the standard for the work that we do in the school system. So I just want to acknowledge Jim Kane's fine work.
Further discussion on Article 14, other business.
Mr. Moderator?
Where was that? In the back of the room, Mr. Holliday?
Just a reminder to everyone that the athletic field over here, the newest athletic field on this plant, has been referred to all night long as the TIC. I think a few years ago, the field was renamed Daryl Sawyer Field. And I, and probably his family, would appreciate it being called Daryl Sawyer Field.
We missed on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Further discussion under other business.
Mr. Moderator?
Where are you? Got to stand up, Ruth. Ms. Barton.
I move, if we have no further business, that we adjourn.
I will hold on that because I'd like to, in tradition, give you the rundown of who actually showed up and, more importantly, who didn't. Tonight, a total of 14,736 registered voters could have been in this room. Obviously, that didn't happen. From Brattleboro, out of 8,292 voters, 56 of you showed up, which is a little more than a third of the town meeting members. And that is 0.6%. In Dumerson, 1,574 of you, or it could have been here, 10 of you showed up, 0.6%. From Guilford, 1,634 of you could have shown up, 12 did. That's 0.7%. Putney, 1,620 eligible, 6 showed up. That's 0.3%. And from Vernon, 1,616 could have shown up, 5 of us did, 0.3%. So the total's tonight, 89 registered voters, or 0.6%. There you have it. Next time, bring some friends and bring them roses because tonight was Valentine's Day. With no further action, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The 2012 Brattleboro Union High School District meeting is over.